Okay, here we go then. So I would like to call the City of Mount Vernon City Council Meeting for December 9, 2020 to order. The time is now 6:01 PM. Like if you could all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Oh, we're ready. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Great, thank you so much. Continuing with our roll call of council members, so Councilmember Gary Molinar.
Here.
Councilmember Melissa Beaton.
Here.
Councilmember Mark Holst.
Here.
Councilmember Mary Hudson.
Here.
Councilmember Iris Carrius.
Here.
And Councilmember Richard Boxsmith.
Here.
All right. Moving on to our consent agenda, we have three items tonight. Item A, B, and C, it's the council meeting minutes, payroll checks, and claims.
I'd move for approval of our consent agenda.
Second. You motion by Mary and a second by Melissa? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Under Reports tonight, I'm, item A is our review of emails from the public. And again, as on our agenda, it indicates how to make those public comments. So I'm going to ask Peter Donovan if he would go ahead and read the public comments for us.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Yeah, until Council is allowed to meet again in person, which will be a great day. The public is encouraged to email their comments to address Council at council meetings. And sending those emails to council@mountvernonlaw.gov. The first community comment tonight is from Scott Correa. And Scott writes, greetings, Council. I would like to bring up a few things that are outside of the limited scope of the two homeless ordinances you vote on tonight. It is already cold, wet, and windy, just as it has been for the last 20 odd years I've lived in our little town. Our city still lacks a firm plan to assist people with warm dry places to protect themselves from the elements. It's November, we know it's cold. We shouldn't need to wait for a mayoral proclamation of a weather emergency to start helping. We are better than that. It's starting to look like you would rather look away in the hopes that this will just go away. There are more people out in the cold this year. We should not pass this off on the churches and create rules for them to work with. We, as a community, need to work, need to work this together. We can do better. A potential first step is the removal of limitations on faith-based organizations. Help to the homeless community. Of course, this year's, here things are a bit different. And there is a hotel voucher program in place, and that's a good start. Before we hurt ourselves patting each other on the back, we need to remember that this program is paid for with other people's money. COVID relief funds came to the rescue. This isn't a homeless person problem. It's not about politics. It's a humanitarian issue. Remove barriers to helping human beings. It's November, it's cold, just like it is every year. Open something now. Find a way to make it work. We can do better. Please think about this when you, as a council, have a chance to make the right choice tonight. The next community comment is from Jason Griffith. Hello, Mayor Bedrow and Mount Vernon City Council. A good friend of mine recently relayed that he had gotten blazing fast fiber optic internet to his house in Anacortes, and that it was a city utility. I guess they have been running fiber in the water lines throughout the city for the past several years, following a European model for municipalities. What a fantastic idea. If the pandemic has taught us anything, it is that internet is as central to the modern household as water and sewer. Has Mount Vernon discussed expanding your fiber network to serve the neighborhoods? I know we presently all pay too much for too little with commercial internet providers. Any information on when we can expect this type of utility in Mount Vernon would be greatly appreciated. At least I sure hope this is coming to our town. For background on what Anacortes has done, and as you're probably aware, Jason provides a link there for Council. I believe Council has that link in their email inboxes. Cheers, Jason Griffith. And finally, from Holly Bullock. Dear Madam Mayor and Honorable Councilmembers, I wish to convey my appreciation for the lights in the trees in our downtown core. They have brought many people a sense of joy and peace at a time when many things are dark and difficult. I hope to see them every year. Sincerely, Holly Bullock. That is all of the community comments, Mayor.
Thank you, and Council may know that there are a few other that came to the council email, but what we did was we, you know, got ahold of those folks and made sure that it was going in the right place. So some of them you're going to be hearing in the public hearing for some of the items that are coming up. So that's why you're thinking, wait, we thought we saw more. And then I also, I was able to get Mr. Griffith's phone number, so I'm going to call him and talk with him about how our fiber works and answer questions for him, so. Okay, thank you, Peter. Item B tonight is a miscellaneous department updates, and this would be a normal Public Works week. And so I have asked Esco to do a quick update on a couple things. So I'm going to turn it over to Esco Bell, our Public Works Director.
Thank you, Mayor. Hopefully, I just shared my screen successfully. Can you see Public Works update?
Not quite yet.
Oh, how about now?
There you go.
All right. Just a short update with two items. If I can. Okay, I'm sorry. First thing is, great news that we just heard from the Transportation Improvement Board, which is a state agency, that the city's going to get $1.3 million in grant to signalize the intersection at Hogan La Venture. This grant was a great, really good achievement. Bill Bullock, our city engineer, did the work. And scoring that grant in the middle of a pandemic is, is good, really good. So just here's a slide that shows the location of the intersection, which is over by the new YMCA. And, and there's a shot of it there. If you haven't driven through it recently, it's a, currently is a four-way stop. And then just a couple items of information about the timeline. So that we've got the grant, it'll be actually, that's an 80% match. So if the project comes lower than that, then it'll be 80% TIB funds and the 20%, approximately 20% city funds. So we'll get going right away. We've already advertised for consultants and within RFQ. And, and we're going to spend most next year because we've got some right of way. And there's long lead time on the polls that go for signals. And have that ready to put out to bid and construct in 2022. There's also some restrictions about just how much, you know, the TIB wants the money for construction spent not until 2022. So this'll, this'll, this'll fit with that schedule. And if you don't have any questions on that, I'll mention my second item. Second thing.
Questions for Esco? Okay, great. And I appreciated Esco sharing the timeline because sometimes folks feel like, okay, we've got this grant, and they're going to see construction like next week. So it takes a little time. So thanks, Esco.
You bet. And then the second item I'm going to mention is just the council and mayor familiar? The city owns a gravel pit, a small one out east of town. We call it the SR9 gravel pit. You can see there on the slide, the, the red lines that show the Mount Vernon city limits in the yellow with the urban growth areas. So this pit is actually outside of our city in UGA on SR9. And then here's a little closer shot of it. The, it's basically square, 550 by 475 feet, six acres. You can see it's got a gravel pit to the south of it, one to the west of it. I'll give you just a little bit of bullets of information. It was, you know, it's been a gravel pit for a long time. I think first established in the 40s. The city received it in the 70s. You saw the slide where there's pits to the south and west. A few years ago in 2015, the city leased the pit to the owners to the south. Their current company's called Skagit Aggregates. The lease has those folks mining the gravel and then paying royalties to the city. And then also they have the requirement, Skagit Aggregates has the requirement to perform all of the reclamation activities to restore slopes and plantings and things like that that are required by the state DNR permit. So far, the city has, you know, they've done a good job, Skagit Aggregates, in mining this. They said they'd take about five years. And they're doing well with that. They've already mined out $200,000 worth of royalties have been paid to the city. And we estimate that there's up to as much as $50,000 more dollars worth of royalties that can be mined out of the pit. Once it's mined out, this is my opinion, I, I, you know, I'm not seeing much use that we have that if we wanted to sell it, it would be, in my view, a good idea. And it just sort of happens that Skagit Aggregates, Aggregates has just made an offer to buy the pit. So maybe if we want to, further discussion of that should probably occur in an executive session. And that's my report for today. Mayor?
Okay. So Esco presented the details of this in our open session because we are limited to only discussing price in an executive session. So it's kind of introducing the, the topic today. Kevin, I don't know if you have anything to add?
I've had discussions with their attorney, Laura Breckenridge. And I told her that we would be willing to have a preliminary discussion with the city council as to offer to purchase, to measure the temperature of the legislative body to see if you are interested in pursuing negotiations, which, as the mayor rightly said, the Supreme Court has limited our ability to discuss the issue to only basically bottom line price. And the other issues have to be conducted in open session, which is why we're having this discussion today in open session. But I did tell their attorney that I would make efforts to get back to her on whether or not this is something worth a greater conversation, or whether or not we're just not interested at this time. So we aren't wasting resources amongst attorneys. So I think that's what we're just looking for today. And then we can get into some details on price in the correct venue.
So if there's any thoughts from Council or information that you may like us to give you in order to make a decision, but any initial thoughts tonight?
I don't see any future use. Esco's kind of explained that. The pits basically mined out. I doubt we're going to expand the city limits out that far anytime soon. So I would say let's entertain an offer for it.
Any other thoughts?
And Mayor, I'm just wondering, have they indicated if there's no real value left in terms of mining? Has SA indicated what they would like to do with the acreage?
Kevin may know that, so.
I have, and I would be happy to share the letter to the city council. They have not indicated a future use. Now, when property owners or the leasehold owners take the case to mining, they have to, after the, do what's called a, which means they have to take some action to finish up their work. So we can get into those specifics as well in open session, what that is. There's a reclamation plan. And then it'll be simply a function of zoning. Couple things where they have noted, there is a single residential house adjacent to the property. And then, as I think the Public Works Director identified, they own property adjacent as well that is also mined. So I would imagine there's a couple moving parts as to what you could do in terms of both zoning and mitigating adverse impacts to nearby properties. But no, we haven't identified it.
And I will just mention that, yeah, I don't, you know, because they have the bigger pit, the big active pit, I mean, I don't know exactly what they're going to do either, but it also might help them carry out their reclamation activities and things like that. And maybe they're going to use it for some other things, staging of some sorts. But it's certainly, you know, it's not huge, and they can make better use of it probably than anybody, is, is what it amounts to, yeah.
Okay, any other, any other thoughts on it? Okay, think on that, and we'll have another little bit of conversation here too, so. Okay. Thanks, Esco. All right, any other, while we've got our Public Works crew here though, any questions for City Council on Public Works? We just were keeping it fairly brief on the update.
I have one quick question, and I know this isn't in your wheelhouse, Esco. This isn't a city project, but the construction on Fur that was, it had a timeframe, you know, that you, your office posted, and it's still not done. Do you have any idea what, I know it's a PUD project, but have they had any discussion with you about how much longer they think it's going to go? And if you have to get back to me, that's totally cool.
Mary, let me get back to you with all the good information you need. Certainly, yeah, I don't know the answer to that off the top of my head, but I certainly drive through there every day.
I do too. I do too. So thank you. I appreciate you checking into that.
You bet.
Can I do a similar check in with Esco? In that there was an email chain asking about the history of speed limits on College Way. And so we maybe could pick that up later unless you have that information now. I just wanted to put a placeholder in.
And we were, and also on that, we're putting that together right now. We've done work on speed limits on College Way. And then I was talking to the police chief about also just a report, I think he's working on, about all of our speed limits. So we're doing that right as we speak.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Okay. Great, then we'll go ahead and move on. That's all. Item C, under Reports, is our council member comments. Is there any council member comments tonight?
I do.
Oh, go ahead, Mary.
It's just a quick little thing. I know that we all get talked to a lot about affordable housing and homeless services. I would like to, and I will send this information on to my fellow council members, but I'd like you to look at the Anacortes Family Center model. It's a fantastic model. It's got different stages of assistance for people that, that need help. It starts with a homeless shelter, then they, they have a whole continuum of programming that they, they have people go through to try to help them. They actually have some affordable housing. There's, it's a great, it's a great model. It doesn't take up a lot of space in Anacortes. And I personally think it's something, it's another option that any city could, could model. I just don't know how many of you have looked into it or been there or any, done any digging. I was able to get some information this year. And I talked to the manager, Dustin, and he would welcome your phone calls, would do a virtual tour, just so that you have an idea what's out there for different models of operation to help those, those people in, in more need. So that's just my little input, just a different role model for us to look at.
Okay, thanks, Mary. All right, any other comments? Okay, I will move on then. Item D is our council and committee agenda requests. And so I think what I'll do, just to make sure that we've got it kind of down and scheduled, is the update on our College Way speed limits and all that. And that way, we can just put it in on a date and how, council will know kind of when that's coming. So that sound okay? All right, great. Any other council or committee agenda requests?
I have a couple of things I'd like to ask if the other council members are interested, or if I should just ask my questions individually. So one of them is the energy efficiency plan that the city has. I know it's, there's a document that was created, you know, a few years ago, and it, we've largely been implementing quite a bit of it. I think there's been a lot of advancements in some state programs that are out there that we might be able to take advantage of. So I'm wondering if it would be, if the other council members are interested in, you know, hearing from our, you know, staff from the mayor's department about what they think we might be able to, where we can add value and save some money for the city in energy efficiency? And what that plan's scope might be? And how much effort to put into it?
So I know in the past, we did the LED streetlights. Blinchester Field found that opportunity for us. We were able to get PSAE to contribute some of that. If staff has some specifics that we could, could bring forward, I wouldn't have a problem with that.
Okay. Perfect, I can add that as a agenda request. And kind of go through not only what we could do in a, in a public work sense, but also general facilities. Chris has done a lot of work there, and so we'll give an update there. And then things that may be coming down the pike from the legislature around funding. We'll just kind of give an overview of, of all of those things. I think that's a timely topic, so. Great.
I know we also did the solar panels at the city hall. I was wondering if you could even give us a little number on how much we are actually saving? And if we are saving in relationship to the amount of the cost that we put into it?
Yeah, we haven't had that for a while. That's a great idea, Gary.
Yeah, be kind of interesting to see. Because it's probably been, what, five years? Four years?
Might have been more. I can't remember. We had the last update.
More than that, yeah. And, and maybe along those lines, sort of while that was older technology, you know, what are the, you know, expected kind of savings from newer technologies? You know, not just looking backwards, but what are the costs on operations and equipment purchases for something like electric vehicles or solar panels? Are they actually saving us money? Over how long would it take to recoup monies, those kinds of things? I'd be interested in. Thank you. And, and similarly, to, is this just my question or other people interested too? I appreciated Jason Griffith's comment and question because some other cities have some different maybe policies or directions they're headed with that. And I know that we haven't had a detailed discussion about that since I've been here. So if, maybe I'm the only one who has questions about sort of what those policies are, what the cost would be to provide those types of services. So I can ask the mayor and other smart people separately unless other council members are interested.
Actually, I'm kind of interested in that. So if I could be included in that conversation, that'd be great. I think it'd be a nice timely thing to actually have, you know, on a council agenda. Because there has been a model that we've been, you know, successful at for so many years. And to kind of explain the, a little bit of differences on how Anacortes is incredibly lucky because they have a water utility and they have the infrastructure to do it really easily. And so that, that there is some differences. However, over the last few years, we've been kind of doing residential connections as folks are willing to pay for installs. And Gary, do you mind if I, do you mind if I share your little story? Okay, so we all know Gary's had a little trouble with connections of internet at home. And so I asked him to, to give him a call because we do have fiber optic backbones that run in our commercial areas, but in other areas as well. And there happened to be a fiber backbone that connected hospital services that was a block away. Actually, I think maybe even less than a block away. So when homeowners are willing to pay for the install to run that fiber from that, you know, commercial sort of space, you know, we're able to then provide fiber to the home. So it really depends on where you live and how lucky you are. And then the last thing before, and then we'll, we'll put it on an agenda to go over fully. We have some ideas on Stokely Tower. And I might have talked with you about a few of them. I can't remember who I've mentioned this to. You know, Stokely Tower needs some repairs, and they're pretty pricey. But what we could do is look for grant funding where we would repair Stokely Tower and then partner with one of our ISPs that specializes in wireless internet services. So it's not Wi-Fi, but it's like, almost like a cell phone signal that they can then do to a pretty significant area. So we could have that service from Stokely Tower and specifically target and assist low-income families or school-age children with a grant program, like when we get really creative. So there's a lot that we can talk about. So we'll, we'll put that on the agenda and, and, and give you a good briefing and kind of, you know, get some direction, so.
Okay, can I add just one more? And that is, that is, I've, I've been wondering a bit about how the consent agenda is structured. And if there may be some ways to save time in our meetings for meatier topics and dispense with things that may be of, of less consequence or more run-of-the-mill. And so I talked with the mayor a little bit about the consent agenda. And with Carrie's help in her office, we pulled together some examples from other cities about how they structure their consent agenda. And I wonder if that's a topic for the whole council? Maybe they'd be interested in seeing that package? I'm certainly not talking about shoving everything into the consent agenda and not doing our due diligence. But it does seem that there's some things that are pretty run-of-the-mill that if there's no questions on, could, could stay in the consent agenda and be approved. So that's a thought that's occurred to me that could help us streamline, maybe save some staff resources. I don't want to diminish the level of detail of documentation too much though, because I think it's important for the public to see that kind of stuff. So that's the balance I was wondering about.
So for me, I had a hard time moving to a consent agenda at all. I always feel like the public has the right to know everything that we're going on. I can live with consent agenda we have because it's minutes which are posted on our websites, it's payroll. So it is pretty, pretty run-of-the-mill stuff. Anything that would be, be taking action, I think the public has a, a right to see what their council's doing rather than hiding it in a consent agenda.
I would be interested in, in seeing what examples you came up with though, Richard, to see what you were thinking of including. I, I remember when we went to the consent agenda. It was when I was pretty new on council, and that was a, a long discussion to start with. So I would really be interested in hearing where, where you have found perhaps some other things that could be added. I'm just, just for discussion purposes, I'd like to understand that.
Any other thoughts on that? Okay. Why don't we put together some examples that Carrie found for us? And we'll send that out. I think it's always nice to sort of see what we're talking about. That maybe, maybe helps the conversation along. And then we can revisit if we want this on an agenda or not. Does that sound okay? Okay. All right, great, thank you. All right, any, any other council, committee agenda requests? Great. All right, moving on then into new business. Item A tonight is the appointment to the Mount Vernon Arts Commission. And Jennifer Berner, our Perks and Enrichment Services Director, is here to present this item. Jennifer?
Good morning, Council. I am here this evening just to request that Council approve the appointment of a new arts commissioner. Her name is Vanessa Good. She's a new resident to Mount Vernon. We had an opportunity for her to attend our last Arts Commission meeting. So she had to just drive and see how it fit with the stations and seemed to be a really nice fit for the Arts Commission. She has a lot of great experience in many different mediums of art from theater and acrylic painting and music. So I think she brings some really great knowledge and experience with her. And she was formerly on the Mill Creek Arts and Beautification Commission. And moving up here, she wanted to jump in and get involved. So that is one piece that we're asking for. And the other is the reappointment of three of our current commissioners, Daniel Brooks, Robzwick, and Kevin Hartman. They are all very, very much key pieces of the Arts Commission and are hard workers on the Arts Commission. So we're asking for an appointment of Vanessa Good and a reappointment of three of our current arts commissioners.
If there's any questions from Council, we could do this two ways. We could do one motion for the appointment of Vanessa Good and then a motion for reappointment of the other three. Or we could do a separate one for each name.
I would move for approval of the appointment of Vanessa Good and the reappointment of Daniel Brooks, Robzwick, and Kevin Hartman to the Arts Commission.
All right, thank you. I'll second.
Second.
Okay, motion by Mary. We'll give a second to Melissa. She's a little quicker. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Thank you so much. And we're excited for those folks to continue their service and then Vanessa coming on. So thank you. Motion carries. All right, item B tonight is a public hearing for the adoption of permanent regulations to allow severe weather shelters to house the homeless. And Rebecca Lowell, our senior planner, is on board to lead this discussion. And then we'll have our public hearing after a quick briefing. Is that what we're going to do, Rebecca?
Sounds good. Thank you, Mayor. And good evening, council. So this is the first of three separate code amendments I have before you this evening. And as you will, you're all aware, we've had interim regulations in place since 2019 for this particular code amendment. I've listed out the five ordinances that council has adopted from 2019 to the present. So this is definitely an item that council has seen a number of times. But even so, I think it's always good to, just going to give a high-level summary of the regulations that are before you. So these regulations are implemented only once the mayor declares a severe weather event. And a shelter can be opened by a religious establishment, a fraternal organization, public agency, or other entity. The request is made to the city and the applicant will need to demonstrate that basic life safety requirements have been met. From a procedural standpoint, our building official and fire marshal would visit wherever the site was, complete an inspection, and following that inspection, the building official would issue a temporary use permit. And there is no permit fee for this type of a permit. The shelters are required to close two days after the severe weather event. And these are the same set of regulations that we've used once when Skagit County opened their emergency shelter at the Senior Center in Mount Vernon. So the staff findings that are before you this evening, these are summarized in the memo and in the ordinance that's before council, include that the required procedural steps have all been satisfied. This includes the CEPA process, notification of the Department of Commerce, and different hearing notices. Staff finds that these regulations are necessary if council wishes to allow emergency shelters. And the planning commission held a public hearing and recommended council adoption of the ordinance before you this evening. And as such, staff is asking for council's approval of this ordinance that would create permanent regulations to allow severe weather shelters.
Okay, is there any questions from council before we ask for some public comment on this? Okay, I will add that last year, staff reached out and tried to work with anyone that may have interest to sort of get pre-qualified, I guess, if you would think of that. Where we would, staff would spend time to go out and really have people prepared if they were so interested. And I don't want to put anyone on the spot. I can't remember if we looked at one or two places. I know the Senior Center may have been one, but Rebecca, are you aware of anyone else we might have tried to help prequalify?
There were a number of areas, correct, that we looked at qualifying. And we talked to the county even and provided some suggestions because we knew of some buildings that were sprinkled and would be good opportunities. But we, no one followed up with us. You don't want to go any further with that, so.
Sorry, Mayor. One thing to add to that was that we did provide the county a list of, with the building official and the fire marshal, items that would be required in order to bring those facilities up to code. So there are a number of buildings that the county owns that we've provided that. So we're just basically in a waiting pattern right now, as Rebecca mentioned.
Great, thank you. Okay, if there are any questions from council, first we'll go ahead and open the public hearing regarding the adoption of regulations for severe weather shelters. And so I don't believe we have anyone on the line for that, but Peter, I'll ask if you have some written comment. I think you might.
We do have two comments that were sent in for this item. Okay to go ahead and read those now?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. The first is from Scott Correa. And Scott writes, "I need to open my remarks by saying this ordinance is a great first step in trying to get out of the way of those wishing to keep people warm. With that said, I oppose the ordinance as written because I feel we can do better. The ordinance is overcomplicated and in need of simplification. Number one, we can predefine a severe weather event and go straight into helping people, or we can wait for a non-value-added task to be added to the planning flow and waste time. I feel the need for a mayoral proclamation is unnecessary and an unnecessary step in the process that merely consumes time and provides no value in the shelter stand-up. We have the ability to predefine exactly what conditions constitute a severe weather event well in advance of actually having one, and we should do so. Number two, we shouldn't wait for a weather event declaration before issuing temporary operation permits. That wastes time and keeps people colder longer. We should create a framework allowing the application process to occur prior to a weather event, issue a permit ahead of time, ahead of the weather event, and modify the ordinance to say that these permits are automatically activated only during the weather event. Number three, Section 8.50.20 is riddled with the use of the word adequate. Adequate is a non-defined term in that it is subjective as opposed to objective. An ordinance that relies on repeated use of adequate needs to go back to the author to define exact requirements. Adequate is surprisingly inadequate. Number four, 8.50.50A6 requires the maintenance of a log for facility checks subject to inspection by city officials, but does not codify who, when, or how that inspection will occur. Either put the city inspection requirement in the ordinance or do away with the log. We need to keep it easy to keep people warm. Please take the time to draft something that is better than this. It's within our ability to do so. And with that, I respectfully request the council consider my input and get a better process in place to keep people warm. Scott Correa." The second letter sent by Ashaya Kavan. "To whom it may concern, in regards to the proposed addition to the Mount Vernon Municipal Code called Chapter 8.50 for Regulation of Severe Weather Shelters, I think that this chapter should be adopted by the city. While I wish we could have proper housing for all of our community members at all times, I understand the constraints of the system, and I know that having severe weather shelters is an important link in the chain of safety for our unhoused brothers and sisters. I also see that Mount Vernon is considering addition of Section 17.210.070 to Chapter 17.210 to provide for safe parking spaces for Mount Vernon's homeless population. I disagree with Section 4.1.2, I hope it is clear what I mean by this, limiting parking in religious host sites. But for now, I think the regulations seem fair and will make a difference in the lives of those who need it most, especially with the looming homelessness crisis across the country due to the pandemic. I am proud to call Mount Vernon my home and proud that we are considering adopting these changes to our city to make them safer, cleaner, and more hospitable to all members of our society because each person has great inherent worth. And we can never know what we can achieve together without giving each person the best shot possible. Sincerely, Ashaya Kavan."
Okay. Thank you, Peter. We do have two people in the waiting room. And because I want to make sure that we're allowing them to speak on the right public hearing tonight, I think I'm going to go ahead and admit them and just double-check what they want to comment on because I don't want to mess that up. So hold on a minute and I'm going to admit some folks and then we'll double-check what they may be here to speak about. So let's see, Annabelle, welcome to our council meeting. I wanted to double-check which public hearing you wanted to comment on so we don't miss that.
McLaughlin Road, LLC Development on McLaughlin Road.
Okay, well, we have a few more items before we get to that. So I'm going to go ahead and put you back in the waiting room and we'll get you for the right one. Is that okay?
Not a problem.
All right, thank you. All right, and then someone caller with an 899-9801 phone number. Could you let us know who you are and what you'd like to comment on, which public hearing?
Oh, I'm sorry, the same as Annabelle.
Oh, okay. I'm going to go ahead and put you back in the waiting room and we'll get right back to you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, good. Don't want to miss anyone. All right, council, we've had our public hearing. I'll go ahead and close that regarding the adoption of permanent regulations to allow severe weather shelters. And it's open for you for comments, questions, or action, or all three.
So I think this is an ordinance that we've worked on for some time. We've had a couple temporary ordinances to get us to the point that we're at now. There were some concerns raised. I'm not too concerned with them. I think that the chart that we have here to define what a cold weather event is also gives the mayor a little bit of flexibility. If there's a severe weather that maybe is not cold, but we need to provide some housing, it gives the mayor the flexibility to call a weather event that would allow one of these organizations to open the shelter. I think there's a system in place that people can be pre-qualified if they want to be. If you look through the part that was talking about the adequacies, there's a definition for that. Is there adequate fire alarms? Is there adequate facilities for restroom? It's pretty well spelled out. I don't think it's something that we need to go back to the drawing board and rework. So I would like to move the adoption of ordinance 3820.
Second. Okay, motion by Mark and a second by Mary. So is there any comment?
I guess I'd like to take the opportunity to ask Ms. Lowell if she saw any room for improvements given the comments. You know, I'm particularly interested in streamlining anything we can if you felt that there were, you know, any pieces like the log or anything that could be reduced.
Sure. With regard to the log, first thing I wanted to point out was is that that is within a subsection of that ordinance that is an example of basic building safety standards. And that's not something that city staff would be doing. This can be put into place, and it's actually something that we've seen used up at the Seventh Day Adventist in that when they had the homeless encampment. They don't have a fire sprinkler system and their alarms weren't code compliant either. And so what our fire marshal was able to do was they require what's called a fire watch. And it's a prescribed process whereby, in their case, they had hired security personnel that would walk around the building at different increments of time. And they would just make sure everything was safe. There were no fires, no smoke, those types of things. So that's what that log is. And then the city would receive copies of those logs just to make sure that they were being completed. And when it says that you have to have somebody who's, I think the word certified is used, that just means that it was another condition the fire marshal had to make sure that these folks who were doing this went through a certain amount of training. They had to be trained and they would show us their credentials, that they knew how to use fire extinguishers properly and other items like that. So this isn't something, a fire log isn't always required, but it is a tool that a fire marshal can use, but only in circumstances where you have non-conforming buildings to start with. So that's what I would say with regard to the fire logs. You know, this ordinance, we were, the first time you actually implement an ordinance, there are, you know, small things that you see. This one was, it's nice that we were able to implement it and then make some small tweaks to it. The one thing that we were also able to do is, you know, have all the forms updated and ready to go. So when people do come in and want to do this, I think we do have, you know, as streamlined a process as possible from where we sit, you know, having, we would really, it would be great if we could find partners that would give us the information that we would need to pre-qualify these areas. As we stated earlier, we've reached out to several different partners hoping to get that information. Haven't yet, but maybe we will in the future because that would be, that would be just one last thing that needs to happen. I think I got all that question.
Yeah, thank you for your thoughts. And I wanted to add a comment, Madam Mayor, if I can, to wrap up my piece of this. And that is that, yeah, we have talked about this. We've used it. I think we're ready to approve this. My hope would be that we would spend some time, more time and effort on a permanent shelter in the city, or at least in this urban area with Burlington, to provide what would be considered more sort of regular, known, cost-efficient, less emergency response reactive related. And so I know there's some efforts going on in that. I just ask, encourage us to redouble our efforts on that and hopefully not have to rely on, you know, reactive severe weather shelters in the future. Thank you.
Okay, any other council member comments? We do have a motion and a second on the floor. Okay, great. So it's a motion by Mark and a second by Mary adopting ordinance 3820 as presented. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you so much. All right, moving on to item C. It's a public hearing. The adoption of permanent regulations to allow safe parking facilities to house the homeless. And again, Rebecca Lowell will present. Rebecca?
Thank you again. So similar to the last agenda item, there has been interim regulations in place for temporary homeless encampments, or also known as safe parking, since 2019. And we have, council has adopted three separate ordinances over this timeframe that I've listed here that were also provided within your packets. Summary of these amendments would include that these regulations need to be on property that's owned or controlled by a religious organization. They have allow one vehicle per 10 existing parking spaces. They require restroom, which can be indoor or outdoor, hand washing and trash facilities. There is a six-month maximum. However, there is the ability for city council to extend that at your direction. That isn't something that as staff we could do. But you, an applicant could go before council and ask for that to be extended. There is no permit and no fees. There is a review, but there's just not a formal permit that's issued with this. The applicant would be required to give notice to the neighbors in the city. They also are required to give the city a description of their security measures and provide a code of conduct. I'd say that the security measures and the code of conduct is the same information that's required of the temporary homeless encampments, the portion of the code that's already in place. So with this set of amendments, the findings from staff that you'll find in your memo and in your ordinance was that our required procedural steps have been satisfied. The regulations are necessary if council wishes to allow safe parking facilities. A planning commission held a public hearing and they recommend council adoption of the ordinance before council this evening. And as such, staff is also recommending approval of the ordinance before council that would create permanent regulations to allow safe parking facilities.
Any questions for Rebecca before we open up for any public comment?
I got a quick one. In Section 4, under number 6, it talks about electrical. Is that just because it's kind of more of a state thing? Or is that something that we? Or is that something that we? I guess where I'm headed with this, are people, are they running electricity out to some of these cars? Or is that not really allowed to happen?
So if they're running electricity out and it complies with building and fire code, they could do that, otherwise they couldn't. And I'll be really honest with you in saying that I'm not exactly sure what would be allowed. I believe it would be something that the fire marshal would regulate. I mean, I know in limited instances, you know, folks are allowed to extend cords out to places to provide electricity, but I'm not exactly sure if that would be allowed or not.
Okay, so it's probably more just state, just state code that we're
Correct. Yep, yep.
Not so much that we're, we are saying that we we would allow electrical going out to these cars?
No, no, we're just saying that they have to comply with, you know, just as a preliminary matter, they're gonna have to comply with all of the city's existing regulations.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, Peter, do, I think we have a comment on this, do we?
We do have a comment on this.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, we have a comment on the safe parking ordinance sent in by Scott Correa. Scott writes, I am opposed to the safe parking ordinance from an operational perspective. I am fully supportive of the intent behind the ordinance's wish to protect neighbors from adverse side effects these operations may cause. I like the ordinance so much, I only seek one change to it. My concerns revolve around the fact that this ordinance targets faith-based organizations. While on the surface, the ordinance appears to be graciously allowing car camping, it is, in fact, limiting and otherwise unrestricted activity. There is no restriction currently in place on faith-based organizations who wish to minister to the homeless. The city would be establishing a limit to how a church ministers to its congregants, and I believe that to be a dangerous place to go. Let me approach this a bit differently than my last opposition letter on this subject. I am blessed to have a very long driveway at my home. I can legitimately park six cars on my driveway in addition to two in my garage without getting close to the sidewalk. I could decide to be a compassionate guy and let homeless campers park in my driveway. Nothing prevents it. I own my home, and this is a decision that I can make anytime I wish. Is that fair? Why am I unrestricted in my ability to let people park in my driveway, but churches are saddled with all the stuff in this ordinance? Mind you, I think the limitations of the ordinance are basically good. How difficult would it be to make this ordinance applicable to all city properties? It would set performance standards I would probably do anyway if I were to park people on my driveway. My neighbors would be in favor of it. Most importantly, the churches could not make the case that they are being discriminated against, and their ability to minister to their flock is being unreasonably limited. I really hope you will consider this and rewrite the ordinance to widen its focus to all properties in the city instead of banging on churches as they try to do good things for people. Thanks, Scott Correa.
Okay, and that's the only comment I believe you received written wise, and there's no one in the waiting room for that. So I'll go ahead and close the public hearing regarding the adoption of regulations for safe parking facilities. So counsel, it's in your court.
I would just like to say that while this may look like it's placing some restrictions on faith-based organizations, number one, we haven't had anybody come forward and want to do a safe parking ordinance. But I think if you, if somebody really looks at the ordinance, what they'll see is that we've put safety mechanisms in place for those that would be occupying those parking facilities and also for the neighbors. There was a statement made that there is no restrictions currently. Well, that's not true. There's a, under our temporary homeless encampment, I guess is the right order. Rebecca will correct me if I'm wrong. People could put up to a hundred cars in a parking lot. That's what our ordinance says, up to a hundred people in a facility. That would apply to the parking lots. What kind of negative effect could that have on the neighbors to to a faith-based organization? And how would that affect those that were staying in that facility if there's not adequate restroom facilities, if there's not adequate trash disposal? There's a number of things that went in, thoughts that went into this to to allow for faith-based organizations to be able to provide this kind of a service. Again, we haven't had anybody that has come forward. If we have somebody that's not a faith-based organization that wants to to put this forward, it's simple to amend, but we need to see some interest. In my opinion, we need to see some interest from somebody in the community that would want to do that.
Other thoughts? Richard, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. We've had a couple of conversations about if, about whether or not this should extend beyond faith-based organizations. And I'll just echo Mark's point that if other groups are interested in this and can follow the same basic rules to keep the public safe, then we, I think we would entertain, you know, some amendment to this. But I'm comfortable with it moving forward, as is. I would, I would make the same point I made in the previous ordinance. I think we should be focused on permanent shelters that provide, you know, proactive care for our neighbors who need it instead of having to deal with safe parking. Thank you.
Any other comment from counsel? Kevin might need to correct me if I'm wrong, but we actually do not in the city allow folks to live in vehicles, RVs, on private property outside of a primary residence.
Certainly, if you are doing such an intense use as of allowing six or more vehicles to basically turn into a camp, that would be not a single-family residential zoning use anymore, and you'd probably be violating several provisions of our zoning code.
Okay, thanks, Kevin. All right, if there is no other comments, if counsel would like to take action, this would be adoption of ordinance number thirty eight twenty one.
I'd move to approve ordinance thirty eight twenty one.
Second. Okay, a motion by Gary would give a second to Iris. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, thank you. Motion carries. All right, item D tonight is a public hearing regarding the adoption of permanent regulations extending the timelines for the expiration of permits. Rebecca?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. By way of a background for this agenda item, through no fault of their own, applicants have had their development projects delayed primarily due to precautions put in place by the governor to decrease the spread of COVID-19. Similar to the last two agenda items, council has adopted interim regulations through two different ordinances that have been in place since July of 2020 that have allowed the same permit extensions that are before council this evening. And those extensions, just a summary of those, it is a seventy-five day extension that applies to all land use, engineering, building, and subdivision permits. And the seventy-five days was calculated because it is the, from when the governor first declared a state of emergency to when Skagit County was recognized as being within phase two. So how we propose that. The findings for the set of regulations are that the required procedural steps have all been satisfied. These regulations are necessary if council wishes to extend the timeframes within which permits would otherwise expire. The planning commission held a public hearing and recommends council adoption of the ordinance before council this evening. And similarly, the staff recommendation would also be for approval of this ordinance that would create permanent regulations to extend the expiration timeframes for land use, engineering, building, and fire permits.
Okay, any questions for counsel on this? Before we open the public hearing? All right. We'll open the public hearing regarding the adoption of permit regulations extending the timelines for expiration of permits. And Peter, did we receive any public comment on that?
I don't see any public comment for this item.
Okay, great, thank you. And no one else has joined the waiting room. So we'll close the public hearing regarding this issue. All right, any questions from counsel?
I'd just ask Rebecca if she knows off the top of her head how many permits this would affect.
So with your interim regulations, there was about half a dozen permits, like subdivisions or like the the larger permits that we were able to extend. And moving forward, I'd say there's probably, I'd say at least probably about a hundred, a hundred or more permits. Most of our applicants haven't had to actually use the extensions. They've been, we already have, you know, fairly generous timeframes, but it's been extraordinary time, as you know. So those that have had to use it have been very appreciative of the interim regulations thus far.
Thanks, Rebecca.
If counsel's interested in taking action tonight, this would be ordinance thirty eight twenty two. I'll make a motion that counsel adopt ordinance thirty eight twenty two.
Second.
Motion by Melissa and a second by Mark. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed tonight? Motion carries. Great, thank you. All right, item E. Item E is our public hearing regarding our 2020 site-specific comprehensive plan amendments. Rebecca? All right, thank you, Mayor. Just one more agenda item, and you guys are done with me. Actually, you know what? I think I'll let our waiting room in so they can do the briefing on that. Hold on one moment, please. Okay, Annabelle, I hope that you've joined us. And where we're on now is we've just introduced the items, so staff is going to give a briefing, and then we'll open the public hearing for comment.
Great.
Thank you. Go ahead, Rebecca.
All right, perfect. So I always like to start with this slide that I know counsel has seen probably every year for the last fifteen years or so from me, but I think it's really an important one, and we only go over it once a year versus many more times a year that I come before you with actually project-specific applications. So it can get confusing why I have two different applicants combined into one, one hearing before you this evening. And that's because what we're looking at tonight is comprehensive plan amendments that fall underneath the Growth Management Act, which is, the regulations for that are very different than if this were a subdivision or a different type of application, like a building permit. Those types of applications fall under local project review that you see on the the right-hand side of your slide. So when we are processing applications that fall underneath the Growth Management Act, really the the items that are most significantly different is that we're required to have a twenty-year comprehensive plan, which of course we have, and we update as we're required to. We have a public participation resolution, that's resolution four ninety-one. So both of the applications that are in tonight's hearing, both are consistent with those. Notably, proposals need to be considered concurrently so that the cumulative effects can be determined. So that's why we lump these two applications together and take them through with one application. And also, very importantly, and this is something that we spend a lot of time talking to different neighbors about every year, because it is confusing, is that this is a land use designation change. So when applicants come before us and they want to to have a different type of a land use designation, they first have to ask for a comprehensive plan amendment, such as the two that you're looking at tonight. Following that, there's a rezone hearing. That's also, we're looking at just a land use designation. And those two hearings are separate because one is a legislative hearing tonight that you're seeing, and then we'll have a quasi-judicial. A rezone is actually a little bit different process, so that's why those are separate. And then only after applicants have completed those two steps can they actually submit permits for subdivisions or building permits or to construct roads. That comes after those items are completed. So it can be understandably frustrating for some of the property owners who really want to talk to us about impacts that they're going to see, but those impacts are going to be analyzed and mitigated when we get a development application. So that's why it's not part of the applications that are before council this evening. So as I stated, we've got two requests that were on the council's docket this year. The first one I'm going to start with is the McLaughlin Road LLC application, and that is, the applicant for that is Paul Woodmansky. This application is located south of McLaughlin Road, just east of the Summerson subdivision. And I've got it shown on on this aerial map with a red box here. You can see north is up towards the top of the screen in this applica, or on this map. And you can see College Way here and Martin Road here, just to get you oriented as to where we're at. And this site is about almost fifteen acres. It's a fourteen-point-eight acre site. Now, I'm gonna do something I don't always like to do, but it was the best view of this. I've rotated this aerial map. So now north is towards the bottom of the screen. So, but you can really see, see the site where I've put the arrow here just to give you a different view of, you can see McLaughlin Road down towards the bottom of the screen. And you can see where in the Summerson subdivision where Autumn Way currently ends an existing stormwater pond that's on that site, and then where this property is and what it looks like. I believe these were 2019 aerials. Moving from that to, this is actually a portion of our comprehensive plan map. And you can see again, I've rotated north correctly towards the top of your screen. You can see McLaughlin Road and College Way. And again, I've put the the subject site outlined with the red box for you. So this application, this property is currently has a designation of church, and the applicant is seeking to change that designation from church to medium-high-density multifamily. Now, you may be wondering, you know, how did this become church in the first place? There's a, you know, a detailed chronology in the staff report that you were provided, but in short, the previous owners of this property did plan on developing a church on this property years ago. They went through the process of having the comprehensive plan and zoning designations changed. Following that, the property changed hands. And now the new owner, while they wished to use a portion of the property for a church, they've realized that there would be leftover, for lack of a better word, property on the site that would be useful to have designated another way. So that's why they have asked for this comprehensive plan amendment. Oops, there we go. And I'll stop there with that one. Another thing I'd point out here with this, you can see I've also identified the the surrounding comprehensive plan designations. You can see to the west of the site, we've got the single-family medium designation. And we also have another multifamily designation in brown that's really would be located southwest of the site for that one. So moving from this application to the second one.
Let's just say, if counsel had any questions, you know, again, it's not quite time for a public hearing, but any questions for counsel before we move on from this? Okay, great, thanks. Go ahead, Rebecca.
So the the second applicant in this year's comp- So the, the second applicant in this year's comp plan amendments was for Optimum Properties. It was represented by Craig Kamik. This property is located at the southeast corner of Division and South 18th Streets. And is also represented on this aerial. North is at the top of the screen for this one. And again, you can see I've outlined this property here in the red, red box. As well as we've got South 18th and Division identified here for you. Again, just to give you a better aerial view of what this site looks like. I've, I rotated the map, so now north is towards the bottom of the screen. And then I went ahead and I also identified, here's East Division and South 18th. Just so you can see the extent of this site and the neighboring nursing home and the, the other facility that's a nursing home and an assisted living facility that are immediately abutting that. And then switching to the same comprehensive plan map layer for this application as well. You can see that I've identified this parcel also in red here. And also identified the, just the surrounding land uses to give you a good idea just on our comp plan map, what is surrounding that. You can see that to the east and south of this site, there is existing the medium-high-density multifamily exists there. And some of you on council would probably remember that several years ago, this application to designate this site from multifamily to the healthcare development district was approved. And now the applicant is asking that it go back from the healthcare district, which is what it is right now, back to the medium-high-density multifamily.
Okay, is that what you've got Rebecca, or any more slides?
Exactly, if you want to, yeah, I've got, I've got a few more slides just with process. But I didn't know if we would, if anyone had questions on this, this one.
Council, do you have any questions on this particular request? Okay. Rebecca, do you want to do the next or do, is this where you would time our public hearing?
It's up to you. I could finish up a world process before or after.
Go ahead and just finish the process.
Okay, perfect. So big picture procedural, as council is aware, this comprehensive plan amendments are, take the longest basically of any type of permit that we process here in our department. Notably, these are applications that are all required to be docketed. Because of the COVID-19, our docket was delayed by several months. So we did that in July of this year instead of February, as we usually do. We completed the Department of Commerce CEPA review in hearing notice process. Planning Commission did have a open record public hearing on November 24th. And then of course, tonight, we're before city council. Planning Commission did recommend approval of both of the applications that are before council this evening. There are two overriding criteria that staff is asked to review that are codified in our code when we are looking at comprehensive plan amendments, and they are as follows. Is the request compatible with the city's comprehensive plan and our development goals? The second criteria is are public utilities, public facilities and other services currently adequate to serve the proposed district? And there's an analysis that's found in the staff report provided to council. But in short, oh, excuse me, staff did answer yes to both questions. Both criteria have been met. With that, staff finds that the procedural steps have been satisfied as well as the approval criteria that we're required to analyze as part of these types of applications. The planning commission held their public hearing and recommended approval. And as such, staff is also recommending approval of both of the applications before you this evening.
Okay, any questions from us council before we open our public hearing regarding this item? Okay, seeing none. Annabelle, I want to thank you for your patience and for being willing to comment tonight on this agenda item. So I'm going to go ahead and see if you would like to please state your full name for the record and then make your comments.
Hi, my name's Annabelle Koglin. K-O-G-L-I-N. I think more than anything, I do have a question. At this stage of the game, since the public hearing notification apparently expired in November, does it, does anything that any of the residents say that are near to that McLaughlin Road development, does, does anything we say or request matter at this point, or is it a done deal?
It absolutely matters at this point until council takes action. That's how we have the public hearing for that, prior to them deciding or debating or taking any action.
So I guess my number one concern is obviously traffic on McLaughlin Road, because it's a tiny little two-lane road. And I did look at the documents that were submitted regarding the wildlife that will be displaced. And I think a couple of species were left off of there. We have eagles, we have trumpeter swans, and we have coyotes. I live on McLaughlin Road, about eight houses up from the planned development area, maybe six houses. And I just, you know, we're here, the wildlife is here. And I'm not sure what the, what the purpose of, of changing the designation from church to multifamily. Is there really ever going to be a church? Or is it really just to open the floodgates and just put a billion people down at the end of this day? So I guess that's my biggest concern.
Annabelle, you cut off at the very end there, so I'm not, I'm not sure if you intended to mute yourself at that point, so I just want to make sure.
Yeah, I just left off with, the end of my, my concern is, you know, obviously traffic and, and the wildlife that will be disrupted.
Okay, okay, thank you so much for your comment.
You're welcome.
All right, I do, I'll ask Peter if there was any written comments that were also submitted for this particular item.
Yes Mayor, there was one written comment submitted. The letter came from John and Marie Paxson on Autumn Way. And it is regarding the McLaughlin Road project. And John and Marie Paxson write, "We have concerns about this proposed project. Number one, wetland impact. We have observed that most of the south portion of the church site is very wet and soggy for many months of the year. And we were informed that no more fill was allowed in this area. How will this be addressed so that the runoff from these projects is filtered by vegetation on its way to Trumpeter and Nookahamp's creeks as it currently is? Number two, increased traffic on McLaughlin and the intersection with Martin Road will have very large impact on a small, barely two-lane road. We have witnessed near accidents already and expect many more. Will there be another road accessing this property in the future? Thank you, John and Marie Paxson."
Okay. Those are the two comments that we have regarding this particular item. So I will close the public hearing regarding our 2020 site-specific comprehensive plan amendments. And I'm going to toss this over to council if you have any questions, any questions about the comments that were received.
Yeah, Mayor, I do have, I do have a comment. They are correct in that that road is, is very slint, or what's the word I'm looking for, narrow, small, yeah. Is there any, any plans, I mean, I, it probably doesn't affect tonight, but in terms of, of changing the zoning. Rebecca, if there is multifamily that does go down, I mean, that, part of that is going to be that they're going to have to increase the size of that road, yes, or?
Correct. The, the minimum requirements are determined by the number of traffic trips that are generated. So that, that's really kind of the crux of why this can be a little frustrating, obviously for, for property owners, because we're looking at these things separately. But until we get an application submitted to us, which can't be until the designation is changed, we don't know how many traffic trips will be generated, because it really could, could vary, right? Let's say somebody was just creating like a four-lot short plot. They were just going to build four homes in that area. That obviously isn't what's being proposed here, but there would be much different mitigation for that than let's say 50 multifamily units and a church. And again, I don't know how many units will be built there, but just to give you an idea of the, the difference between the two. But let's say there was something like 50 multifamily units and a new church that was going to be developed there. At a minimum, the developer would be required to do what's called a three-quarter street improvement, which would mean that we'd look at the type of street that's there. And they're going to make improvements to the development side that would include curb gutter and sidewalk. And then that intersection with Martin Road and McLaughlin would be analyzed as well. So that may mean a turning lane, that may mean different stop signs. Again, we don't know until we have our traffic engineers go out and they actually, that's part of something that applicants are required to pay for. They require, it's called a traffic and currency permit. And through that type of a permit, then we're able to mitigate that future development. Very similar to like when the Somersun development was done, or actually, you know, any type of a subdivision through the city. That's how we determine what traffic improvements will be required.
So I guess like to answer some of the, the comment concerns, and I would have the exact same concerns, is that once the designation is changed, it's then up to the applicant to propose to the city what they would put in there, but following every type of requirement from infrastructure all the way to those units. And then they can decide if that's something they're going to do or not. And as an example, you know, this designation was changed years ago. And if they were to have built a church, they would have had done the same thing. They would have had to analyze how much traffic and then build the infrastructure on their dime, not the city's dime, to accommodate that. So I'm hoping that that helps explain that the city would absolutely look at all these impacts for whatever is ultimately proposed for development there.
Eric, just to add on there was just the fact as well, as we're talking about critical area and wetland, same scenario. Once the developer would submit something, this is for council and for the folks that have commented, we go through the same exact process. We'll be going through a critical area, the wetland studies and all the things that would be required with it to ensure that they stay as pristine as, as possible, as legally as, as we are bound to do. So that's a whole nother part of that process that Rebecca and is part of that CEPA process as well as the critical area permits that may be in there and other permits that are associated with that.
Okay. Maybe that answers some questions for council as well. All right, any other?
It does, I was going to ask that question as a, just another example around the wetlands issues. We know that the area in, that area, there's land owned by the land trust. And there's been a restoration project there. So folks know that it's certainly a concern of mine. But I'm confident that we have processes in place to analyze and, you know, avoid those impacts. So appreciate that.
Okay. Any other questions from the city council? Okay. If the council chooses to take action again tonight, it would be ordinance number 3823.
So I think most of the, this is a kind of a frustrating project, especially, or process, I know, especially for people that are, are living around that area. Growth Management Act gives us, or tells the cities that we have to act on these kinds of requests. And they kind of give us a timeframe to do that. I'd just like to reiterate that all this currently is doing is changing the, the comp plan designation of the property. It's not approving any projects. We don't even know what the projects would be. They can't, those applications can't be submitted until this, this process takes place. There's going to be a number of steps, if there's going to be some sort of a development. There will be a number of steps that have to be followed. There's federal and state regulations that have to be followed, especially when it comes to the, the critical areas. We've got our own traffic impact ordinances that make requirements for the developers to, to make sure that there's adequate road space and safety for the surrounding neighbors. So with that being said, I would move the adoption of ordinance 3823.
Second. Motion by Mark and a second by Melissa. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Are there any opposed? All right, motion carries, thank you so much. Thank you for your comment, Annabelle. We're going to put you back in the waiting room now.
I'm, I'm going to check out, thank you so much, best of luck, everybody stay safe.
Thank you. Okay, all right. That's always the most stressful part, is trying to make sure we figure out the public comment, or the thing, so that was good. All right. Moving on then, so now we're on item F tonight. It is a bid award for a Colson Trail Safety Lighting Project. And this is exciting, so we're going to have Bill Bullock, I think, present this item. Bill?
Thank you Mayor, good, good evening council. So we have put the contract side of the Colson Trail Safety Lighting Project out to bid. We, this was our first project where we adjusted our unit prices to what's been happening in 2020. Our engineer's estimate for this was 142,000. We received 11 bids on this project, so a healthy bidding environment, which was great. And our low bid was with Oceanside Construction out of Bellingham. They are the contractor that also did our project on North 19th Culvert recently, very successfully, as I might add. So we're happy to have them on board. And their low bid was 134,488. Earlier this August, Puget Sound Energy is, Intolite is who's going to be installing the actual poles. So this contractor will basically be installing the conduit, the sonotubes and and the connection to the power for this whole product. And then PSC Intolite will come in and install the poles, the lights and pull the wire. And then later, we do have some security camera elements which Ken Klupi from our fiber department will be installing that after PSC is done with their portion of it. So with, between the city contract work of 134,000, PSC's agreement with the pole installation of 127,300 roughly, total construction will be 261,788. Our grant we have for this is 271,000. So all of this fits within our budget grant that we have for this project. Oceanside is planning and starting in January after the first of the year. Oddly enough, Schedule 40 PVC conduit is a long lead item right now. And they have currently purchased that conduit before they get a contract from us, because they don't want to go in February. So that's great. It's crazy what COVID's doing to procurement stuff. So Public Works is asking for a motion to award the project to Oceanside Construction. And then we will begin construction in January.
Great, any questions for Bill on this item?
I think this is just a great thing that's going to
Okay, so I'm going to take that as a motion by Gary, even though he broke up during a lot of that comment, and I know that he's
How is that possible with my new internet?
I think it's your cord now for your headset, so maybe if we keep that, keep that still, that might work. Sorry Gary. So that's a motion by Gary.
Yes.
I'll second that. But I also want to add, Bill, good job on getting the TIB money for the HoGrove La Venture project.
project.
I'm pretty excited about it. It was a neat Christmas present before Thanksgiving.
Okay. So that's a motion by Gary, a second by Mary. Any comments? All right. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed? All right. Motion carries. Thank you so much. I do want to go back real quick. Richard, I want to make sure that I heard that you had opposed the site, the ordinance 3823. Is that correct?
Which ordinance? The comp plan?
The comp plan, yeah.
No, that, that was some sort of Zoom issue. No, I'm supportive of the comp plan amendments.
Okay.
And that was my vote.
Yeah. Good. Thank you. Thank you for clarifying.
And thank you for clarifying.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Moving on to item G tonight, it's the approval of agreement with Boulder Park Incorporated in King County. And I know Escobell's listed, but maybe Gary Duranso is doing this item. So Esco, do you want to start it off?
Yes, I'll do it. And Gary's here if we have any questions because he certainly knows all about this. So staff recommends council authorize mayor to execute a contract with Boulder Park Incorporated in King County for the hauling and application of biosolids to agricultural land in Douglas County, Washington. City's wastewater treatment processes produce solid waste byproducts that we call biosolids that need to be acceptably disposed of offsite. Hauling of the biosolids to Boulder Park Incorporated for land application uses in eastern Washington is the most cost effective disposal option available to the city. A private contractor, Boulder Park, Inc., works with King County Department of Natural Resources to apply biosolids to agricultural land in Douglas County, Washington, in an effort referred to as the Boulder Park Project. The city of Mount Vernon and other agencies contract with Boulder Park for land application of biosolids. The Boulder Park Soil Improvement Project began in 1991 in order to beneficially enhance and fertilize soil using biosolids. The Boulder Park Project consists of approximately 40,000 tillable acres used for dry land wheat production. This acreage is farmed and owned by over 100 participants. The purpose of this agreement is to allow the city to enter into a biosolid hauling contract, which provides for four years of service with the option of contract extensions. So we have been using this very successfully for 21 years now. And the, the agreement that we have before you has only been modified to increase the costs a little bit for escalation from $69.47 a ton up to $71.97 a ton and to extend the, the period of time till the end of 2024. So again, this is the, by far the most economical approach for dealing with this, this item, the biosolids for our wastewater treatment plant. We actually spend about 200 to 230,000 to do this. And it turns out that, you know, we spent more than that in the past. It's actually coming down a little bit due to our belt filter presses and our screw presses that are more efficient and lighten the load a bit and we get more of it. So actually the actual cost out of our fund is holding stable and trending downward. And so I'm, unless you have any questions, I'm requesting the approval of this agreement.
Okay. Any questions for Escor Gary since he's here?
I've got a quick one, I hope. And are there competitors? How do we know that this is the, the one, the option to choose?
There, there are some facilities that, that compost. We can actually compost ourselves on site, but that's going to be quite costly for us to do that. We, we have looked into hauling to places like La Conner, but it's really cost prohibitive to do that. So the Boulder Park Project is really the most cost effective for us and just completely hassle free. So that's, that's the best place for us to go with it.
It's the only facility of its size and type?
They're the only ones that land apply it. There's other facilities that do compost it.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
I'd move approval of the agreement with Boulder Park. Sorry, Joe.
Nope. That was me, Mary, and you beat me to it. I'll second your motion.
Thank you. So a motion by Mary and a second by Melissa. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All right. Thank you. Motion carries. And thank you, Gary, for being on tonight.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
All right. We've come to item H and we had hoped to, to present this to you as a donation of a small piece of property. However, the owners decided to withdraw their donation to the city. And so we're going to just go ahead and, and move past that agenda item since we really don't have anything to talk about anymore. So perhaps that will come back at another time. You never know.
Well, if we had this on the consent agenda two weeks ago, we might've been done with it. I'm sorry.
Okay. Item I tonight, it's the approval of an ambulance purchase. And so Chief Brian Bryce is here and it looks like he has a few more folks that maybe chip in to his conversation as well. So Chief?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Good evening. Here tonight to present the ambulance purchase request to authorize the mayor to enter into a contract with Braun Ambulance to replace one of our aging ambulances. By way of background, when we took on transport services in 2019, part of that contract with the county of Skagit not only increased our service, but also provided some assets to the city. Those assets came in the form of, they, they gave us three ambulances, two for frontline service and one for reserve service. Because of the aging condition of those pieces of equipment, we also put into the contract that the county will provide for reimbursement of replacement costs for portions of those ambulances based upon the mileage at the time that we took on that service and entered into that contract. This is the second ambulance and by the contract in February of 2021, the county will, through, through the contract will be providing us with 103,000 and 103,564 towards the purchase of an ambulance to replace that. With that, this ambulance will be spec'd out similar to the one that we just purchased, being able to carry the equipment needed for the firefighter's response gear, breathing apparatus, along with carrying the load systems and the, the normal conveniences that are needed for protection against COVID, any communicable diseases in the form of UV lighting, separation from the front of the vehicle to the back of the vehicle, keeping the driver separated again from any communicable diseases that might pass through that way. This has been, it wasn't in the budget that was presented and I believe Gary spoke last week as well about why we're coming right now, just because of the timeline for them to do the build. Again, we had dialogue with Braun a couple of weeks ago and they're very hopeful, but again, they, they run the same problems that most of the businesses are. With COVID, they have the uncertainty of what does that affect and how does that affect the parts that they need to get to be able to produce that as well. But we're looking at about a 240 to 270 day build for this ambulance. With that, I am looking for approval to go forward with the entering into the contract with Braun and purchase of the ambulance.
Okay. Questions for Chief on this?
I'd move that council authorize the mayor to enter into the agreement with Braun to purchase this ambulance.
Second. Okay. Motion by Mark and a second by Mary. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed? All right. Thank you. Motion carries. Item J tonight is an interlocal agreement with Skagit County and Doug Valeski is here for this item. Doug?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council members. Staff recommends that council authorize mayor to enter, enter, enter into, interlocal agreement with Skagit County for the provision of senior services for the calendar year of 2021. Each year, the city of Mount Vernon budgets for and provides funding to Skagit County for their senior services program within the Department of Public Health for services provided to our senior community. These services include the nutrition service, the nutrition services that include nutritionally based noon time meals at the Mount Vernon Senior Center and home delivered meals to seniors over the age of 60 and meals served at the senior center over the noon hour. And also operational support for the Mount Vernon Senior Center, which provides senior center program services to our senior community. So staff has committed 56,304 of financial support to Skagit County for the provision of services to our senior community for 2021, which is included and adopted in the 21 budget. An interlocal agreement between our two agencies needs to be approved to confirm the city's funding commitment. The 2021 budget for senior services represents about a 1.5% increase from 20 to 21. So staff recommends council authorize mayor to enter into this agreement.
Okay. Questions from council?
No questions here. I will make a motion that, to authorize the mayor to enter into this very important contract and service.
Motion by Melissa. Motion by Melissa, a second by Gary. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? All right. Motion carries. Thank you. And I know Doug's got our next agenda item, but before we do that, I wanted to let council know that Doug worked very, very hard and has submitted 1.6 million to the state for reimbursement for our Cares funding. And so I know all the other council members, I mean, although the directors had the, the responsibility to spend the money, but Doug has the responsibility to account for the money. And so a lot of hard work went into that. So I wanted to just publicly let you know that he did that and thank him for that. So.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, it was a joint effort with a lot of people. Thanks, everybody involved. But I'm glad it's over.
All right. So item K tonight is a write off of uncollectible account receivable accounts. And again, Doug, our finance director. Go ahead.
All right. Today I'm here to request council approve a resolution to write off uncollectible accounts, receivable accounts. So we've been working to reduce outstanding balance of all of our past due utility accounts. And after review of many of the old enclosed accounts that have proven to be uncollectible or have minimal balances, the city has identified accounts that are appropriate for us to write off. So following a recommendation received during the 2019 audit from the State Auditor's Office regarding outstanding overdue accounts, the city is recommending writing off the attached listing of accounts that you have with a total of 66,398 and 59 cents. So city staff is requesting council approve a resolution to write off the uncollectible accounts receivable accounts.
Okay. Any questions for Doug on this particular item? I know in your council packet, you had a list of, very specific list of names and, and what those accounts were.
So Doug, I know you've gone to every extreme possible to collect what was collectible. It seems to me that a lot of these are either businesses that have gone out of business, filed bankruptcy, or properties have been sold and the folks have moved away and there's really no feasible way to collect. We couldn't put a lien on any properties or anything. All our, all of our resources are exhausted.
That's correct. Yeah. Most of the ones that you have in here, they've either been sold or like you said, are in bankruptcy. None of these have liens on and we don't have any ability to put liens on these. Some of them that you don't even have dates on them are before, like they're in the 1990s or even earlier and have been sold several times since. So yeah, these are just a few. Actually, the auditor's office had a bigger list for us, but you know, we're not giving up on some of those yet that, you know, we've been working with a lot of our customers as far as making payment arrangements. And there's also liens out there, but these are properties that we just feel there is no way we'll ever be able to collect these.
Well, that was my thought. I just wanted you to confirm that.
Doug, could you remind us though, that since you've taken over and worked on this particular issue, how much you have collected that was passed due when you took over?
Well, last, last, I haven't looked at it for a while. Last time we looked at it, it was over 600,000. So we've been really concentrating on this and making things a lot easier, trying to make things easier for our customers. Also just trying to set up, making things notices going out sooner than waiting till the balances are too large and, and trying to communicate a lot more with them. So we've been getting a lot more payoffs and I know we're constantly writing large packet or stacks of lien releases. So I think we're, we're, we're doing good here and, you know, and hopefully that, we can keep that up.
Okay. Great. So council, if there's any questions, certainly ask Doug, but this would require a resolution and the resolution number is 985.
I'll move the adoption of resolution 985.
Second. Motion by Mark and a second by Iris. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And are there any opposed? All right. Motion carries. Thank you. And item L tonight is a supplement to the Paths and Trails Fund, Park Impact Fees Fund, Facility Renewal Fund and General Fund 2020 budgets. And Doug will present. Doug?
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight's staff recommends that council adopt an ordinance to amend the 2020 budget. The Little Mountain Park Skills Park and Trailhead Project has some unbudgeted overruns by no more than 65,000. There was also unrealized budgeted donation revenue for this project and the park's capital project fund for about 65,000. This left a shortage of approximately 130,000 for this project. There is funding and other funds to offset this shortage. These funds are available from the Paths and Trail Fund for 35,000 and the Park Impact Fee Fund for 95,000. An increase in these funds, 2020 budget is needed to properly record these costs. The Facility Renewal Fund of 2019 budget included budget for the City Hall Emergency Generator Project costs. The project was not completed until 2020, so a Facility Renewal Fund budget supplement is necessary to carry forward the remaining 2019 budget and cover additional expenditures in the amount of 35,000. And lastly, the General Fund 2020 budget included appropriations of 1,394,000 for direct pass through of sales, JL sales tax collected to Skagit County. Actual revenues collected are estimated to be about 250,000 over the budgeted revenue amount. So an increase in the general fund budget is needed to pass through these extra revenues to Skagit County. So as the carryovers and recording of unbudgeted expenditures of the above capital projects and pass through amounts were not included in the 2020 adopted budget, these budget amendments are necessary in order to complete and properly record these projects. So all listed funds have available funds for these, for these projects. So again, staff has just recommended that council adopt this ordinance to amend the 2020 budget.
Okay. Questions for Doug? Okay. If you'd like to approve, this would be ordinance 3824.
I'll move the approval of ordinance 3824.
Second. Thank you. So a motion by Mary and a second by Melissa. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Seeing none, motion carries. Thank you so much. All right. Got a lot of work done tonight. Item M is for the good of the order and just some COVID-19 pandemic response and discussions. A couple of things to share tonight. I had forwarded an email regarding the OPMA orders. So it looks like we'll be zooming until after January 4th, if, unless things change. And after that, there could be some room for some in-person meetings and so we'll be on top of that. And then second, we can make some modifications. We certainly will. That's one thing. The other thing I was going to mention is I was wanting to present sort of a snapshot of some of the work that we need to be looking at accomplishing in 2021. And I had some ideas of where to put them in a kind of a monthly type of a calendar. With some of the additions earlier this evening, I, I'm going to take more time and plug in some of those items too. So like the fiber optic discussion and stuff like that. So next week I'll come back with just sort of a, some ideas of what we want to do. A quick preview is though, that we want to start our fireworks committee discussion in January and also present on January 6th, a proposal to move forward on fire infrastructure from some of the comments that, you know, we've, we've kind of had discussions for quite a long time now. So we have ideas we'd like to present on, in a quote, public safety committee on January 6th. That'd be our first meeting of 2021. So those are just some of the things where we have in the works. And then finally, of course answering any, well, not finally, two things. So we have had a little bit more of exposures and quarantine situations amongst our staff. And so just, you know, letting council know that that's occurring, but also for the public. We, we don't have redundant positions. So when say an administrator's administrative assistant is out for that department, there isn't another one, you know? So we just have to spread that workload out. And so there are, you know, some effects. know, some effects to service, depending on which departments are affected with folks out on quarantine. So I wanted you to, wanted you to know that. And then Peter and I in our mayor's office have been really trying to keep an eye on the needs that have gone out to not only our small businesses, but the rental assistance. And so, and wanting to problem solve and making sure that every dollar we possibly have to get out there to help is doing what it needs to do. So Peter had put together a slide, I think, or a spreadsheet to kind of show maybe where we're at. I don't know if you want to, wanted to share that at this point, but one of the areas where we want to make sure we're maximizing is rental assistance. And as you know, that we had dedicated some of our CDBG funding, which is HUD funding, and for $100,000, and had given that over to Community Action in August to help get that distributed. To date, they've only been able to distribute $9,000 out of that amount. And so what we want to do, and Peter and I have been kind of working on this jointly, is trying to figure out, is there a way to either speed that up? Is, are there barriers for folks getting that funding? We know that the HUD funding has some significant restrictions. And so maybe feedback needs to go back to HUD on that. And so what we've done is asked our staff specifically in crime prevention, because we have relationships with property managers of multifamily developments around the city, to give us feedback on, do they have tenants that are behind, you know, kind of give us some ballpark dollar amounts. And we've had excellent response from them to give us some, and help and really help us facilitate. For example, Edgar Serrano is our officer in our Colson Creek neighborhood. We have around 600 multifamily units in that specific area. And according to the property managers that have given feedback, there are about 12 units that are in need of assistance out of 600, which was incredibly surprising to me. And so we've asked Edgar to use his relationships with folks there to maybe ask if they'd share some specific information. Are they receiving help another way? Do they not qualify? Is there like a documentation issue to qualify for help? Like, how can we figure out the best way to streamline and reach the folks that need, need this help the most? So I'll have Peter maybe go through the, the funding that we've just, we're trying to keep an eye on, like every week now, to make sure that we're maximizing our help to the community. So Peter, do you want to share kind of what you put together?
Sure. I think my, my screen is being shared now, so hopefully you can see this. On the far left, the, the type of community's assistance that council has approved. And that's come in the form of motel vouchers, micro enterprise grants, rental assistance, small business loans, nonprofit grants, and then the water utility assistance. So you can follow from left to right, the type of assistance, whether it's motel vouchers, what the funding source was. The CARES Act funding is from the Washington State Department of Commerce. And the partner organization indicates the organization that helped us distribute that, that particular stream of funding. So you recall back in the earlier days of, of the COVID pandemic, on May 1, Community Action got some motel vouchers out for us to the tune of $30,000. Those have all been spent. And so you can work your way down and take a look at the type of assistance, the funding source it came from, who was in charge of getting that out, and then the progress that's been made to date on that. So if you have any questions on this, feel free to ask away here.
And just know that we're working on that, you know, maximization of, of getting things out there and really trying to assess maybe some of the need to. Any questions about that?
I, I know, Jill, I know that I had talked to Peter about the, the water assistance, utility assistance. And if I, can you please, can Peter, can you remind me, does that money then go back into our CARES money that we have to allocate, the money that they didn't spend?
That's right. They had a, a spending deadline. We had a, a spending deadline of November 30. So anything we contracted out had to, had to go out by the 30th.
Okay. Thank you.
I think some of the work we're doing around the analysis now is also going to help us know if there is another round that comes in from state or federal government. You know, we've isolated maybe places where we, where we need to focus on helping spend that. We had a conversation with Ellen Gamsen and Andy Mayer today about the business community. And so one issue was brought up of folks that maybe have invested in property in the downtown area all around, like, like pre-COVID, maybe not able to get renters in for their tenant spaces. Is there ways to assist with some mortgage assistance for these folks that made these investments? Like, unfortunately, maybe the timing wasn't that great. So there's, we're trying to identify what other gaps there could be moving forward and piecing together the assistance where we can.
Maybe just to follow up on Mary's question. So that $26,000, for instance, that was not spent, even though they helped everybody that the PUD had on their list. So do we need to make a, a second decision about how to reallocate those return funds?
What we did, because that timing was so tight, you know, they had until the 30th to spend it, we basically rolled that into what we submitted for, say, reimbursement to the city of salaries and benefits, since we, you know, we had a larger number than what we had for the city. So we just rolled that in. So we wouldn't lose it.
And then the, the $90,000 of rental assistance that community actually is still trying to get out, which pot, how, how does that address?
So that funding is CDBG, CV funding. And so it has much different criteria for how, how it's spent. So I would say it is more limiting in, in its criteria. However, the timeframe to distribute that is a little bit longer. So they have through 2021 to, to get those funds out. And so the question that, that's being raised now is, is, is there a, another way or another use of CDBG CV funding that, that may make more of an impact to the community?
Yeah. So I, I think we'd all be interested in any ideas that are going to have as much benefit to the community as possible. I do hope that folks know that, I mean, Community Action's team is working overtime and they've brought on probably a score of folks who are working through the federal process to get out the, you know, well, close to $2 million of funding. And they're working feverishly to do that. And I think we'll make good progress. But like most parts of the country, the artificial timeline of the end of the year, December 31, is really putting a lot of strain on getting this money out. And so there's, there's a fairly substantive effort to get a extension of the timeline for CARES Act money, to extend that timeline so that we aren't rushing so much that we don't spend the money as best as possible. We spend it fast instead of thoughtfully. And knowing that the housing eviction problem is just going to get worse from here. In fact, it hasn't really even started to get bad yet. It will. And so I guess I'm making the point that we ought to be advocating for extension of timelines. And if this HUD money is available through 2021, then we should let that process play out, because the crisis is only going to get worse from here. Now, maybe I'm misreading one of the, you know, programs or something. And there may be a higher and better use, you know. So I think we ought to consider that. So that's just some food for thought.
Yep. I think some of the problem solving that we're concerned about is, I am not interested in having people wait three months for assistance. And so they're out on the street before they're even given rental assistance when the money is sitting there. And so we, we've asked to work with Community Action to see, you know, on their end, is there things that could be done? But maybe it's that we have only 12 applicants that are working through the pro, like, so we're just trying to figure out along the entire continuum is getting that money to the people as fast as we possibly can, knowing that the CARES was different. And we could, within five weeks, people had checks. But rental is, is just different because of the HUD rules. So we're trying to maximize it. Mark, I'm sorry, did I cut you off?
No, I was just wanted to clarify. So the CDBG money, which is about $90,000, it's still sitting there, that's not subject to being lost at this point in time. We have through 2021 to, to allocate that money or disperse that money. What was at risk was the $26,000 for the water. And that's been absorbed into the city's costs for admin that was associated with COVID. So we're not actually at risk of losing anything at this point in time. So we, we still have money to assist people.
Yes. Okay. If you have any questions or thoughts about that, just give us a call. We want to keep an eye on that, though, and keep, keep that money going out for those that need it. Okay, so that's what I had, just as far as the update. Any questions from council around things? Okay. With that, then, we have completed our scheduled agenda items. And I'll ask Kevin if there is any for an executive session this evening.
Yes, I invite the city council to meet in an executive session for a period of 30 minutes to discuss qualifications of a candidate for appointment to elective office pursuant to RCW 423110 subsection 1H. Whoever ran the interview of such candidate and final action appointing a candidate to elective office must be in a meeting open to the public. And moreover, to discuss real estate for sale, purchase, or lease, if likelihood of that disclosure would, cost would result in increased price pursuant to RCW 423110 subsection 1B, the council may take final action following the executive session.
Okay, with that, we're going to be adjourned into executive session at 8:03. I'll ask our staff to go ahead and sign off. And then we'll wait for TV 10 to get us clear before we begin our executive session. I'll ask our staff to go ahead and sign off and then we'll wait for TV ten to get us clear before we begin our executive session.
You